Hello everyone, today is Thursday, November 21st. The time is 6:06. This is a briefing workshop and of the Leander City Council. Tonight, we're gonna hear a presentation from Jeff Buck. Jeff is going to talk to us about a recreation center that Jeff has bought and wants to expand. So Jeff, thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Absolutely.
So, am I supposed to turn one of these on, or are we good?
He's the master of all technology.
I think I'm alright. Yeah, we're good. Okay. Well, anyway, thank you for having me. One of the things, just wanted to come here tonight, we just, myself and a couple folks, we just purchased the Premier Athletic Complex, which is the PAC, and wanted to just talk to you all for just a little bit about what we are, what we do, and then maybe a little bit about what we would like to become and do. And knowing that there's been talk of a recreation, well more than talk about a recreation center, how y'all are moving forward and want to do one, just perhaps there's a way for us to partner together. We've done that with two of our other athletic centers that we have. We've partnered with two different schools. This will be a little bit different, but it is what we do. We're here, and we'd love to be, at the end of the day, the Leander Athletic Center and Community Center. So that's the hope, you know, at least maybe walk down that path if possible. So, without further ado, just who I am, it's Jeff Buck. Pretend there's a K there. I've had to go through that my whole life. And we started about four years ago in Westlake. I don't know if we're allowed to use that term, but we built the Westlake Athletic and Community Center, actually started about six years ago, in partnership with Westlake High School. We then, two years ago, we opened the St. Michael's Athletic Center, which is partnership with St. Michael's Catholic School, which is down in the Barton Creek area of Austin. And one of the reasons why we do this, and why we like athletic centers, is we all know kids are looking at screens all the time now and not being active, and our goal is we want to keep people active. Most of what we do has to do with youth. We do have some adult programming, but we're predominantly youth sports, most K through eighth, but we do have high school boys and girls as well. And that's why we do it. So where we're located, I mean, we've been here for quite a while. I think we were here before it was actually Leander, and then we were annexed, and we're right by the Life Church, just off 183A. We're tucked up in the back. So that's our location. A little bit about, I mean, this is, you know, what we do. We do a lot of basketball and volleyball here, you know, with a lot of kids. So what I'd like to do is just talk a little bit about what our facility is and what we run through our facility each, well, each year. And along the way, if there's any questions, please feel free to interrupt, ask. I'll go off on tangents without a problem, so I'm good with that. Our facility, we have six basketball courts. Those are elementary courts, and we have three, well, it's become three full-size courts. We have nine indoor volleyball courts. We have three sand courts, which are right in this area, just outside, pretend it's there. We have a weight room over here. It's actually a pretty big weight room. I mean, we're not Gold's Gym or something like that, but for an athletic center and a recreation center, it's a pretty nice-sized weight room. It could be a little bit bigger as we expand, but for where we are now, it's a nice size. We have two conference rooms here. These work for, you know, business meetings, birthday parties and the like. We actually have a very large concession area. When you look at a lot of recreation centers out there, they're kinda compact, but this is a nice area. It can be made a little bit nicer. I mean, right now, it is concession. We're thinking about making it, I'm not gonna say a diner or something like that, but maybe upgrade the food and a nice place for people to come in, just have coffee in the mornings and things like that, if they want to work out. We, outside here, we have a sport court that, you know, when the kids don't have enough, you know, playing inside, they'll go outside, and then just offices along here, it's ourselves and some of our tenants. So that's the building. It's about forty thousand square feet, and that's what we have in there. What do we do? Half, predominantly, you know, forty-five percent of what we do is basketball. We have a lot of recreational basketball leagues for girls and boys, grades K through high school and adult. They run all year long. There's four different leagues, and we have over a thousand kids who play basketball year-round with us. So, quite a few of them are from Leander. In fact, probably most of them are. And so, they're already going there, and we love having them. Along with leagues, we do training, whether it's groups of skills and drills, where that's, you know, fifty people, fifty to a hundred, run for a six-week period. Not all on the same court, of course, but, so that's just more basic. You learn how to, you know, play the game. But then we do have people who want individual lessons, just private one-on-ones and small-group lessons that we give for basketball. Along with rec, we have select basketball, which is called Centex Attack. It's actually one of the largest select basketball programs in the state, and we have over three hundred girls and boys who play in it. We have twenty-eight teams, you know, sometimes we'll have, it runs throughout the year, but our biggest season is we'll have twenty-eight teams. And these players, these girls and boys, they play tournaments. It's not leagues, so they'll play, you know, predominantly, most of the teams will play in the Austin area, Georgetown, down to San Marcos. But we do have, you know, a few teams that'll go outside and play in San Antonio, Dallas, Houston, College Stadium, and then, you know, two or three teams that will actually travel as far as Las Vegas, Atlanta, and New Orleans, just to play tournaments. So we go from, you know, but those are, it's a little bit higher than rec, but it's good Volleyball is the other predominant sport that we have, same as basketball. We have rec leagues, girls and boys. It's mostly girls, to be fair. The boys are starting to pick up the sport, not as, but they're way behind as far as players goes. But mostly girls, again, grades K through high school. We do have a little adult, not much, that's more outside. They play in the sand, but it's, you know, the rec league for the girls and boys, it's roughly about five hundred kids who play throughout the year. Same thing, training. We do skills and drills programs that are six to eight weeks long, and then there's some that do individual and small-group lessons as well. We just started our own club program this year. We'll probably have four teams, but most of our club program, I'll say, is outsourced. Texas Eclipse is the largest club, you know, one of the largest clubs north. They have, you know, I think, over thirty teams that we are their headquarters. They practice with us, you know, three days a week during the season. And then, of course, we have sand, which is just sorta more of a fun, not talk fun, but adults that play, you know, randomly throughout the year. As I mentioned, our teams do play in tournaments, but we also host tournaments. Volleyball tournaments are, you know, again, mostly girls, fourth through high school. When we have a volleyball tournament, there'll be over a thousand people in the building on a weekend, really closer to fifteen hundred. These are teams that are all around central Texas. Some come as far as Houston, San Antonio, and Louisiana. Same thing with basketball. Basketball doesn't have quite as many, I mean, basketball's closer to a thousand people per tournament, whereas volleyball's closer to fifteen hundred. And, but again, we try and have, you know, as many as possible, and we're bringing, what we hope is a lot of people to Leander. Is that me?
He's working on it.
Okay.
That's what I hear all the time.
I asked him to make my voice sound more manly, but, I don't know, that was it. Some of the other things we do, and not just some, but this is more in the summer, winter, and spring break, we have camps, you know, during, you know, during that time period, of course, we have hoops camps, volleyball camps, Centex is our basketball camp, but pretty much anything you can do on the court, we'll do. You know, they won't play basketball all day, they'll play kickball. We used to play dodgeball. I don't know that we do that anymore. That's been sort of frowned upon. And, but really, as you can imagine, during the summer, every week, kids still need to do something, and it's a hundred and fifty degrees outside, so they'll come in. If climate controlled, you know, during the winter, we'll have camps for two weeks during the break. The calendar's not very nice this year, as Christmas and New Year's is on Wednesday, so it's tough to have camps, but we will. And spring break as well. So, that's what we mainly do. There are a few other things. Oh, I forgot about our fitness center. I've mentioned it briefly before. We do have a lot of equipment in there. It's probably one of the nicest, least-used fitness centers in town, or, we're not Gold's Gym, but we have a lot of equipment, and if you're looking to have fitness, you can in there. So the other activities that we have in the building, you know, we have birthday parties, community events, I mean, you know, the Leanders Chamber of Commerce event is there each year. Homeschool PE classes are big. I mean, homeschool has grown so much, they don't have PE places to play, so they're at our place three days a week in the morning. Pickleball, we're probably just gonna start a little bit for the, you know, the older crowd, but something to do during the day. You know, also toddler classes.
We take offense to that.
It's what?
We take offense to that.
Oh, right. Older by meaning not high school kids. Sorry. And then, but toddler classes, to go to the other end of the spectrum. Trade shows, wheelchair basketball is in there. I think we have the Olympic wheelchair, I think Coach is the one who does that in there. It's kinda neat, I saw that the other day. And then more. I mean, really, but that's what we do. That's what we do at the PAC, and, you know, right now, we're full. We don't have room to take any more kids, but we do. We don't turn any kid away to play a sport. Just because we're full, we'll find a way. We also won't turn a kid away if they can't afford it. We're not a charity, but we have a charity that helps support people who can't afford it, and if the charity funds have dried up, we just make it happen. We don't feel that any child shouldn't be able to participate because of their family situation. That's not anything they can control, and we're just such firm believers that if they're in there, part of a team doing something, they're not somewhere else doing something they shouldn't be doing. So that's what we do. Now, a little bit about what's out there. What potentially can we do going forward? Imagine the possibilities. That sounded kinda like a neat thing, I don't know. But, so the future, what, where do we see? What are the possibilities that we can add? Well, first off, what is the land around us? This is us. The, here's our building right here. Here's our parking lot. Our land is roughly this. We could have something twice the size of what we have right now. We have enough room for it. I believe we have enough coverage cover for it, and we're good to go. But more importantly, you look around here. There's so much empty land that can be utilized. The person who owns this piece here, and I believe this piece, or at least this one, is the same person we just bought this from, and I know that land can be had. The point being is, we can be twice the size we are now on the ten acres we currently have, but there's a lot of land around us to expand, you know, even more if we want to. So what are some potential expansions? When we were first built, this part here to the right is what we currently are, and this was always thought of Phase Two by the original owners. In Phase Two, there was gonna be one to two full basketball courts, which would be two to four elementary courts, three to six more volleyball courts. And what does that do? That allows us to increase our league play. I mean, simple math will tell you, if we're adding, you know, two-thirds more courts, we're gonna be able to add two-thirds more players. Same thing with our instructions. It's just gonna allow for that much more people to participate. I mean, it's hard to give up court time to one person, so that's why individual instruction sometimes is hard to provide. Other part, which I think is probably, you know, important, is it allows us to get larger tournaments that we don't get right now. You know, the regional tournaments, they'll come to us. We have enough courts, but those that are coming out of, you know, Dallas, Houston, and then national tournaments, tournaments that come into cities once a year, and there's a lot of them, whether it's basketball, volleyball. Again, the national dodgeball tournament was just held at one of our buildings down south. I mean, national, everything that you don't even know exists, come in town, and by adding on, we're gonna be able to bring those tournaments here. So not only by having this, but now we have, between our other two buildings, we're gonna have twelve to fifteen basketball courts, or thirty volleyball courts. Nobody else has more than, it doesn't have a third of that, or not really, even a fifth of that. Do we need to add two more basketball courts? Probably not. You know, thinking we'll probably, if we add on, we'll probably add this here. That's enough. But there's so many other things we could do in this area and then beyond. But going to larger tournaments, what that's doing is, of course, that's bringing people to the city. You know, granted, we're a little bit, I don't wanna say out there, but ten years from now, we're not gonna be out there. There's gonna be restaurants, there's gonna be stores, there's gonna be everything around us. So the hope is that these people come in, and that they're gonna eat in town, they're gonna stay in town, and hopefully, we can help bring, I'm not gonna overstate the economic development, but, you know, every weekend when these things come in town, we're gonna be going from a thousand to two thousand people in our building, and hopefully, more often than not. Other things we potentially could do, indoor turf. There's plenty of space there. We build an indoor, you know, you've got, we all know about soccer, so you've got youth soccer leagues. Adult soccer leagues are actually not as big as youth, but it's far more than youth basketball and youth volleyball. So that's a big addition, or potential addition. Skills and drills training, you know, what else can you do on turf? Of course, play football. Indoor flag football leagues easily can be run, eight V eight on that, and, you know, football camps during summer, winter. And again, it's all, it's amazing how many calls we get at our other facility when it rains by soccer teams, football teams, because we have an indoor turf field, and they just need to come in. And most of the time, we're full just on our own, but that's a potential for that as well. Lacrosse as well. Lacrosse has exploded over the last ten years. Youth, adult, and skill, same thing. And then, what every sport has now that didn't have, I'm gonna say even ten years ago, if you're in a club, whether it's volleyball, basketball, baseball, football, well, football's not club, but the point is, athletic training is part of it. You'll have a two-hour practice, of which an hour and a half is on the court, the field, but thirty minutes at least is gonna be with the trainer, whether it's stretching exercises, motions, and so these are all things that can happen, you know, on the turf field while teams are practicing on the other field. So that's definitely a potential. An indoor pool. You know, I don't know, and this is for all you, I think there's enough outdoor pools around, but I don't think indoor pools, I'm not sure if there is one. But, you know, what do you learn to swim? Youth club, you know, adult aerobics, open swim. I mean, obviously, the beauty of an indoor pool is it doesn't matter what the weather is outside. Whether it's too hot or too cold, it's just something to have, so an indoor pool is certainly a possibility. What else? I talked about our fitness center, but expanding it. I think we could double the size, and if we double the size, then we are, we're big. Again, we're still on a Gold's Gym, but we've become very big. I have the picture of the kids in here, because part of that expansion would include having a, I'm not gonna call it a daycare, but you can, you know, whoever the non-working spouse is, if they want to come in at, you know, eight in the morning, nine in the morning, bring the kids, they'll, they can go work out, and we'll have somebody watch the kids. Heck, even if they don't wanna work out, they can have somebody watch the kids for an hour, right? And they can pretend to work out. But, so that's the hope, when we talk about being part of a community center. It's people come, they congregate, and I didn't mention that, but I should've, when we talked about when we run our own leagues. Because we have up to six basketball games going at the same time, the whole community's in there. So if you have all third graders playing at the same time, you are gonna run into your neighbor. And, you know, sometimes that's good, sometimes it's not. But one of the things we found when we built our first one is just the wow, because normally you're playing at five different school gyms, so you're not together, and just how nice it was. It became, I don't wanna say, but it became very social. You saw friends you hadn't seen for years. And anyway, that's part of the community center. I mean, we are an athletic and community center, so that's part of that. You know, what are some other activities? You know, cheer and gymnastics, huge. Can a rock climbing wall? That's easy. I mean, that goes up against a wall, that doesn't take any space. You know, do we want ninja warrior courses, batting cages? The point is that there's just so many things that we could try and do, or have the ability to do. It's just a matter of, what do we think is important? What is, what do y'all think your community is interested in? And then, you know, working together to, you know, we can't be everything for everyone, but we certainly can take care of, you know, the vast majority of people's wants and needs and recreational activities in where we are. So, I also, you know, I added some outdoor activities, because I showed you all the land that was around us. Easily, two soccer fields could be put there if it came to that. I know y'all just, you have a bunch of parkland and may not have a need for that, but that's just potentially there. Sand volleyball, we have. We would probably move it, but there's plenty of room for that. Playscapes, and then everything else that you can imagine in a park area, if needed. Again, I know y'all, you have a lot of park, or I think you have a lot of park space that you've just accumulated, so it may not be needed, but potentially, the space is there for outdoor facilities. And that's really what we are, what we can become. And, you know, as far as the where do we go from here? We are Leander. We are the Athletic Center in Leander. And, you know, in my world, it's like, okay, do you want to start from scratch, which maybe you do? Or is there a way for us to work together where you have half of it that's already built and active, and then we add some stuff to what we have, and then it becomes, you know, a win-win? It's you guys, we all get everything, not everything, but a lot of what we want. You know, certainly at, you know, the cost would be ridiculously significantly less, because it's already built, or half of it. The driveways, the parking spots are all there. But there's so many different levels we can go. I'd love to hear your thoughts. I know this is new. I'm just here for the first time, and we've only been here for three weeks. I've been coming to the building since it's been built, but this is, that's who we are. That's where we can be, and if there was a way to potentially work together, we'd love to do it and go from there.
So a question for you, like, in Westlake, what would a family membership cost?
And that's a good question, because family, we, it's incredibly cheap. When we, the family memberships down there, it's fifty dollars a month for the entire family. And that's, you know, whether you have, if you don't have any kids, or if you have five kids, it's fifty dollars a month. If it was here, we would probably, if there wasn't a pool involved, it would probably be thirty-five dollars a month. And that's for the entire family. It just, we're not, we just want them to use it. We want people to use it, and we just think it's important for people to be active. Yeah. And that compares to, I mean, most places are, you know, the first person's eighty dollars, and then it's twenty or thirty dollars per, or, you know, whatever. We know we're way below market on that.
So do, like, adults that work out, or they tend to be people that are dropping the kids off, and then they work out while they're there? Or do you find that you've got a decent amount of adults that work out? Now, I'm talking the other facility.
Yeah, no, we don't have any daycare activity at the other facility, so we, those are strictly, you know...
What about if their kids are practicing?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, no, when kids are at the practice, and that's the beauty, they drop the kids off, and instead of watching them for two hours, they'll go ride the exercise bike for an hour, or lift some weights, or treadmill, or things along those lines. It's just so easy. I mean, it's, and when you have multiple sports in the same place as well, it's, you know, for those of us, I have three kids, and, which meant we were dropping off at three different places every night, but, you know, we have, you know, my kids, I could've dropped all three of them off at one place, because one's volleyball, one's basketball, and one's soccer. I mean, it just, it does make life a lot easier when you're going to one place. And especially if there's, you know, one working spouse and one non, or even harder, if there's two working spouses, it just makes it that much easier.
Unless you don't wanna pick them up.
Well, that's right.
And you're easier to find.
Well, that's also what we say during the summer, after they're there all day. It's like, don't you people have homes? No, I mean, we love it, but it's, you know, the summer, they're there from eight in the morning till eight at night, or night at night, whereas, you know, normally during the week and during schools, nobody shows up. We don't really open till four. And then, so it's more of a half-day.
So in your Westlake location, is it comparable to the size that you currently have here, or that you wanna expand?
No, it would be, we're about seventy thousand square feet in Westlake. We have, so it would be, it's not quite twice the size, but it would be one more basketball court, and then we have a, basically a fifty-yard indoor turf field there.
And how many members do you have there?
I say only, but it's about six hundred. But that really means it's three thousand, if not more, because that's memberships.
Okay.
And then, everybody has ten kids over there, it seems like. No, I mean, there's just, there's a lot of kids, so...
So six hundred family memberships?
Correct, correct. Because we don't differentiate between the two.
So do you have a different cost for, like, if it's just a couple?
We don't. We don't, and the reason we don't is we feel that the price is just, it's so low regardless. I mean, you just, you get a better benefit, of course, if you have kids, but it's, you know, when we, we couldn't charge, well, we could, but, you know, twenty dollars a month, it just didn't seem to make any difference. I mean, it does, but it's not significant.
I'm sorry, you said you had a second location?
Yeah, St. Michael's Catholic Academy, which is in Barton Creek. And that is, that's strictly, I say strictly, it's a thirty-two thousand square foot, three basketball court, six volleyball court, but part of our partnership with the school is we actually get to use their gym after six o'clock, and then after nights, and the weekends, and summers, and non-school days. So that gives us five basketball courts and nine volleyball courts as a whole. But we don't have family memberships there, just because it's on their campus. The Westlake is across the street from the school, so even though the school uses it every day for their teams, it's a little bit, it just, we're slightly off-campus. I mean, we're a block off, so that's the difference there.
Do you have a pool at any location?
We do not. Now, Westlake just passed a bond to build a pool. Will we potentially be part of that? Maybe. But that's, will it pass in the years, or close by? Anyway, so, no, we don't. But there's potential that we will in a year or so.
How many square feet are on this one? I think you said...
This is, it's, I said forty-five, I'm not sure if it's forty-two, forty, but it's right around forty-five thousand. Yeah.
So when you partner with the school, I mean, do you envision yourself doing the same thing here with Leander I S D?
You know, it's a little different, because we're not really on the campus, per se. So what happens is, Westlake, so every morning at six o'clock, four of their basketball teams will come up and play. Their drill team will come up and do their practices. So even though they have lots of gyms, there's just more kids, so they use it. After school, anytime it rains, everybody's in there. It's first to text me wins, I guess, but using it. Or if it's cold, you know, during playoff time, the weather gets worse, so the football team will come in and use it, you know, either before or after school, depending upon the day. And, you know, so, I don't think it's the same, because we're not on a campus. Could it be, you know, is it something, could it be something they could use during inclement weather, during playoff season, or any time? Absolutely. But I think it would be, it's not one school, as opposed to the entire, just in the area, I guess. But Rouse is right across, is right behind us, so they would be a natural...
Wiling.
Yeah.
I mean, is the pitch here more partnering with the city or the school district? That's where I got confused on that.
I, for us, I would think it would be the city. You guys have, or I believe, anyway, shown a willingness to want to go down the path of having a recreation center. I mean, the bond has already been passed, so I think we'll follow your lead on things along those lines, you know. We would just, it's just what we, we feel it's important, and I say we, I feel, but there is a we, to become part of where we are. And whether it's a school, whether it's a city, that's what these things are. I mean, these are, you can call them a recreation center, but they're an athletic and community center, and that's what we want to be. And, you know, one of the things is, yes, our name is the Premier Athletic Complex, but if we were able to do something, and you all wanted to, we would absolutely want, would want to change it to the Leander Athletic and Community Center. You know, we want people to know that when you're coming here, you're coming to Leander. And, you know, that's where we are. Now, if you didn't want that, that's a difference, and I mean that, I mean, maybe just things like that, but we are, we take no ego in our names, or anything like that. We don't care if anybody knows who we are. And we're just, we're just, I don't wanna make it sound so altruistic, oh, we're just here for the kids, but that is an equal driver, along with the business, so...
Do you know much about Cedar Park's Recreation Center?
You know, I don't. I, I, I used to know a lot more about Cedar Park before the, um, the Cedar Park Center was built. But, but, but I don't.
And I've only been there once, but it seems like a lot of adults use it. And I don't know if that's the big difference. I don't know if anybody here has ever been a member, but, you know, I don't know if that's the difference because it seems like, you know, when we were doing the bonds, a lot of people seemed to express an interest in having something like that. And it's affordable.
Right.
You know, it's thirty bucks a month, or thirty-five a month, you know? Uh, and I don't know if that's single or family or whatever, but I seem to remember that number.
Yeah.
So what, like, what would a, what would a partnership with the city look like from your company's standpoint?
I, I, I don't, I don't know that really as far as, you know, is it? Because I don't want to sound presumptuous. I don't want to sound, you know, greedy or just, just give us all your money. And well, so I don't mean that. You know, I, I do know what the bond was passed for. And I know what, what we could expand for. I mean, it's, it's twenty-five percent of the value of the cost. And, you know, so if, if, if you guys were willing to participate at that low, I mean, I, I do think it's a win-win. I mean, obviously, I mean, yes, it's a win for us. I, I know that. But I, but I, but I think it's a huge win for you guys as well. That, that is what we, you know, did down south. We got the land all safe and free. I mean, there's opportunity costs and things like that, right? But I, I think if you guys were willing to contribute something, you know, you have to get something in return. And, and we want to make sure whatever it is in return that you potentially would get is what you want. And, and that's why when I brought up the opportunities, I mean, like, hey, I want to build an indoor turf field. But if you guys think a, a pool is, is more important, well, then we have to take that, you know, into major consideration. We, we have to make it so that how do your citizens really benefit? Meaning if we're going to charge everybody else, you know, sixty bucks a month and you're thirty-five, that's okay. But if we're going to charge everybody else thirty-five, well, then your citizens need to be charged less and things along those lines. And, and that doesn't just include for, for memberships, family memberships, but that's for everything. I mean, our leagues, our, our, well, everything. I mean, whatever they do, there's, there's the Leander price and then there's the, the everybody else price. And, you know, we have that now. We have a member price and we have a non-member price. I think this would be a, a third component. I mean, it's, if you're, if you're a Leander member, your price is this. If you're Leander, your price is the same as a member. And so things like that. I mean, it just, I, I do believe, without giving specific examples, you all know what your community and citizens are interested in, what they might want. And we just got to make, make a way to have that happen. And, and I am a, I will say, it took a long time to get through some of the political stuff down south. But, but we are, or I am, I'm a get-to yes guy. Meaning it's the fir-, it's not no, it's not no. It's, it can't always be yes, but you try and get to yes and, or at least to, to figure out, how do we get people what they want? Because that's, I mean, win-win gets used a lot, but we really believe what we've done is, it has been a win-win for, for who we're with thus far.
I have a question. Who would own the buildings?
I mean, that's a good question. We, we don't, I mean, we own it now. But, but as I said, we're not, we don't own the buildings down south. Those are long-term leases. So we, um, just that. I mean, we're, we're not, it's open, i- is the answer. I mean, it's really, how, how does it work? If at all? And, 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 and just that.
Thank you.
Mark, did you, want to ask any questions?
I'm, I'm, I don't have any questions, but I'm going to plan on meeting Jeff.
Yeah, absolutely. What about for low-income families? Is there any help, any kind of programs for people that?
Yes, is, is the short answer. Is there anything official? No. When, when, when people can't afford to play or they ask for financial assistance, there's no filling out forms, there's, there's none of that. We, we simply ask, how much can you afford? And there's one time when we told the family no. And, and it wasn't because it was what they could afford. They just thought, well, my son's playing baseball and we just don't want to spend that much. Well, it's, okay, I mean, if, if that's the reason, it's not because you can't afford it.
Yeah.
Well, we're, we are not, a- and that's, that's just the way we are. That's a little different, meaning Westlake has this, oh, everybody's wealthy, but they're, not everybody is. And, you know, so we also, we're, we're going to be, we're, we're opening, not opening up, that sounds, sorry. We're creating a, a nonprofit. The nonprofit is going to be part of what we are. It's going to be, okay, it's, it's all in the planning stages, so I don't want to, but, but it's really more of, okay, you're, you're, you're playing for, for free, which we're more than happy to do. But you know what? Once a month, you've got to come to this Don't Drink and Drive Seminar, or you've got to come to this SAT prep class that we'll have at our place. We believe it, it's more, we're not just letting you play for free. What you have, we're not going to make you work in the concession stand, but you're going to have to go do this thing that's going to make your life better. And we're going to, I say foursome, to do that, you know, once a month. And, and we just, that's our, that's our goal. It's, it's not, anyway, just that.
So is that the charity that you mentioned?
The, oh, that.
There is, there, there one that already exists?
We have one that exists right now. It's, the hard part is when you, you can't buy a charity, right? So when we bought the PAC, we, we, we couldn't buy the charity. And, and if we, it, it's hard to just change board members and, it, it's just not, legally, it's not clean. So we're just creating a new one. I mean, so.
So you'll still partner with the charity that's helping now? Or you won't need that, need that anymore?
We'll have our own. The charity was, I don't want to say the charity was ourself, I, because that's, meaning it, it was part of who we are.
Gotcha.
So this will also be part of who we are. But, you know.
Jeff, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
No, I appreciate y'all having me and, and taking the time. So, any questions, just, y'all, somebody has my information.
Sure.
All right.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Now, you got it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, we talked about Mark going out there, or Mark and I going out and seeing Westlake. So if any other council members want to go, you know, we can let you know when you want to come then or if you want to schedule a different time with Jeff.
Is there a rock wall there?
There is not.
Is what?
Is there a rock wall?
I wonder if there was a rock wall.
You can climb the outside of the hill if you want.
There should be, because it's just easy to do. But on that, it's, you know, if y'all had the time, go see that and then drive back and, and just see the PAC as well.
Sure.
Yeah. So, because the PAC is, is what it is. But the, what it can be is so much more than all the others because there is so much land that we have, plus what's around us.
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Do we want to have a brief question session? Is there anything that we want to ask of staff that?
I can ask them during the meeting, it's fine. I can ask during the meeting, it's fine.
Okay. Well, with that then, we will adjourn until seven.
Well, welcome, everyone. Today is Thursday, November twenty-first. The time is seven oh one. This is a regular meeting of the Leander City Council. At this time, Pastor Ray Altman will be providing our invocation. If you would, please remain standing for our pledges.
Let us pray. Loving God, you love and desire the wholeness of all people. And we thank you that you are among us as we seek to build a community that is strong. We thank you so much for the many gifts that are before us as a city. We thank you for our public servants and our elected officials for the work that they do. They do not only because it's a job, they do it because they deeply care for this city and its people. We thank you for the citizens of this place. We thank you for our diversity. We thank you that we come from many places. We thank you that we have a desire to be a part of a place that is special for everyone here. And so give us hearts right now that are open to your presence with us. Our desire is that Leander would be a place that is known not just for being a fast-growing city, that we would not just be known for the structures or the things that are moving around here, but the people. That we would be, come known as a place where there is love for the common good, where we are able to listen to and, to one another and work together, and where we're able to show others what a healthy community is. And so, God, we give you thanks for your presence with us here tonight and in all that we do for this city. We ask you especially be with our council, everyone who has prepared for tonight, all the people who are here tonight to share something, that in all of it, we might have ears to hear, that we might even expect that you are at work among us, bringing wholeness and salvation to your world that you love. We pray all these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
All right, at this time, if we could get a roll call, Ms. Craftery?
Councilmember Catherine Battalion Parker.
Here.
Councilmember Michelle Stevenson.
Here.
Councilmember Jason Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Christine Sederquist.
Here.
Mayor Protem Crisernik.
Here.
Councilmember Marcy Cannon.
Here.
Mayor Troy Hill.
Here. We do have a quorum. We can move ahead. So at this time, we're going to move to item seven, which is our public comments. And we're going to begin with Jessica Cooper. We could get your address. You have three minutes.
My name is Jessica Cooper. I live in North Creek in Leander. I am here today to speak about the lack of honesty and transparency from certain members of this council. The most recent change to public records requests is just one example of this council using any means available to prevent and dissuade citizens from being involved and aware of the words and actions of people on this council. I find it appalling that you would put a price tag on access to information that we as citizens have a right to. The ability to access information on what our elected officials are doing and saying shouldn't only be available to a citizen if they are able to pay. This action is discriminatory to people who may not be able to afford the fee. If rec-, if records requests are taking up so much time, I believe the recommendation that was made to provide a database that people can access would reduce the redundant requests. And also, maybe, I don't know, stop doing things that undermine our trust in you. I am one of the citizens who has recently made records requests, including one that turned out to be quite large. What was interesting, among many things, was the multiple copies of the same emails, which I assume was due to the multiple requests for the same information. For the sake of efficiency, it seems the only logic, it seems only logical to just make this available in a database for free. Perhaps some of you are concerned about what this might reveal about you. One example being that while there have been multiple denials of the council being involved in the cancellation of Drag Queen Storytime, the request I made revealed that Mary Hill responded to five different people who are asking for it to be canceled by saying, "We are addressing it." Including one saying it was being addressed with a company who runs the library. So who is "we"? Also, Councilwoman Cannon responded to the event saying, "We're walking a tightrope. There are two events scheduled outside the Library Association that normally vets activities, and I suggested they cancel both." If by saying the council did not cancel it, you mean you didn't meet and vote on it, then maybe that's true. But it is clear that members of the council did attempt to play a part. I had access to this prior to you changing the records requests. If I had made this request afterwards to find out this information, it would have cost me a hundred and fifty dollars. And that would have been to receive multiple copies of the same document. That would have been to receive copies of documents that weren't even actually a part of my request. So the volume that I received was actually in part due to the fact that the system you have in place is inefficient. And the changes you have made are unfair. And I think you should change it.
Thank you. Stephanie Burkew.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Burkew. I live in Crystal Falls on Champion's Corner Drive. On November thirteenth through nineteenth was Transgender Awareness Week. Yesterday was the twentieth anniversary for the Transgender Day of Remembrance. According to annual, the Annual Transgender Violence Report published by the Human Rights Campaign, at least twenty-two transgender or gender non-conforming individuals have been killed in the United States so far in two thousand and nineteen. According to NBC News, since two thousand and thirteen, the majority of the transgender killings have taken place in the South. Fifty-eight percent of the killings of, of the United States transgender individuals that were killed were killed in the South. The South only makes up thirty-eight percent of the United States population. Of the twenty-two deaths, in the sixty-eight percent lived in the South, so of the twenty-two deaths this year, sixty-eight percent lived in the South. Eighty-one percent of those deaths were people under the age of thirty. And ninety-one percent of those deaths were black women. Not only that, the largest number of deaths in the United States occurred in Texas. The intolerance and dehumanizing of the transgender community, the LGBT community, is leading to a lot of these deaths. Nobody is asking you to pick up this lifestyle. They're just asking for you to respect them and allow them to lead their lives. They should be allowed to live anywhere in the United States and feel safe. They shouldn't have to worry about this. It's two thousand and nineteen. There are citizens in our city that identify as LGBTQ, that identify as transgender, that identify as gender non-conforming. You probably know some and just don't know that you know them because they're stealth, because they don't feel safe. You may think that the number of transgender individuals is increasing, and I argue that that's not the case. I argue that our society has become a safer place and they feel more comfortable living as their true selves. Being able to live as your true self and to feel safe also reduces suicide in our LGBT community. Thank you.
All right, at this time, we're going to move to item eight. We're going to recognize our interim city manager, Gordon Pierce, for his service. There will be a brief reception in the chamber lobby. We do have cupcakes, so make yourself at home and have some. And I, just from my perspective, I cannot thank Mr. Pierce enough for everything that he's done. He's, he's steadied the ship at a, you know, certainly a time that it's been tough at different spots, and I appreciate what you've done. Your, your wisdom has been much appreciated. Thank you. So we'll take a brief recess. The time is twelve after seven. All right, the time is seven twenty-eight, and we are back in session. At this time, we're going to go to our staff reports. We have our fire chief, Chief Billy, if you'd come forward with yours.
Good evening, mayor and council. It's my pleasure to present to you the Fire Department's Quarterly Report. Since the last time we met, we, uh, we've been out in the community, being involved in various activities. One of the things that's really neat is we had the opportunity to participate in a business's scavenger hunt. They needed to find a firefighter that was just hanging around. And so, uh, there he is, just hanging around at the station there. Uh, we had other touch truck events, some other demos. Dog Alliance stopped by to visit. Sharks Burger stopped by to feed the frenzy there at Station One. We got the honor of participating in a flag retirement ceremony. HEB does an annual event where they come out and they feed the firefighters there on September eleventh. So they, uh, had a great time there at all four of the fire stations. We got to, uh, meet some of our neighbors and meet some new neighbors out during National Night Out, which is a great, great event there. I've got to brag on our citizens a bit. So when we asked for donations for coats and blankets, we received over a hundred and fifty coats and over seventy-five blankets. And so our citizens really showed up and loved on our neighbors here with that. Speaking of loving on neighbors, we participated with some of our local churches with Love Leander. And, uh, the community, the volunteers that participated in this event knocked on over a hundred doors, installed thirty-two smoke alarms. The really neat thing to brag about is they hauled off over thirty-five tons of debris. They filled up five of the forty-yard containers, hauled that off, hauled two cars off, and a trailer off. And so there were over six hundred volunteers that came out. And so if you look at that, that's over three thousand hours of labor that was donated to help clean up some of these areas and make it more fire-safe and, and more presentable. We had, uh, our, some of our firefighters have participated in the and more presentable. We had, some of our firefighters have participated in the National Firefighter Combat Challenge Team, so they made it to Nationals and competed there. Also, one of our volunteers, Sally Bright, was celebrated in the Women's First Responders. And then, of course, we always participate and are involved in doing public education for kids and their parents. And then Ashley Morris, who's our emergency planner, was recognized on the news recently for the efforts that we do through our Community Emergency Response Team, which teaches people how to prepare to take care of each other during a disaster or an emergency. So with that, I'd entertain any questions you may have. Thank you.
I had a question. Would it be beneficial, like before a council meeting, to have like a workshop where you guys could teach, you know, either CPR, or what to do if somebody's choking? Or would that be something that you would think would be, might be beneficial to people?
Yeah. So we could either do that here. We also participate in like Boy Scout, Girl Scout-type groups, businesses and stuff. So we have the Take 10 CPR. We also have Stop the Bleed. And those are the two big lifesaver skills that we try to teach the public. And so Take 10 CPR is just compression-only, and it literally takes 10 minutes for you to learn it. I don't know where they came up with the title, but that's, so, and then Stop the Bleed is just taking care of those traumatic injuries where you're, where you have the potential of bleeding out and try to stop that bleeding to save the lives.
I think it'd be kind of nice if we could publicize it and have it on TV and, you know, you might get some people come out that wouldn't normally come to that type of thing.
Sure. Yeah, we can get that scheduled.
And do you do like what to do, like for kids in case of a fire or something, like stop and roll?
Right. So the presentation's where we go out in the schools and stuff. So we do that throughout the year and teach the kids about fire and life safety.
Okay. Obviously, I've never taken it, or I'd know what the term should be, you know, stop, drop, and roll.
Stop, drop, and roll. Yep.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Not nearly as exciting as fire, but water to put out the fires, right? This is the water report for October of 2019. So this graph is put out by LCRA demonstrating the combined storage for Lakes Buchanan and Travis. The yellow line is where we are. The yellow line is as of November 1st, and they were, the lakes were at 1.76 million acre feet, or 88% full. Behind the yellow line is a year's worth of data. And so you can see, a year ago, we were just coming off those October significant rains that we had. So the lakes were about 105% full. And then they remained full until about July of this summer, where they began to kind of steadily decrease until where we are right now. After, to the right of the yellow line are the projections that LCRA puts out. So just depending on weather conditions, they have them ranging from 93% full here in six months, or as low as 72% full if we see dry weather conditions. This graph kind of goes a little bit coincided. We bring it out a few times a year just to show the water flowing into the Highland Lakes. We had the big rains, oops, big rains in May. And then in October, so the current month is the chartreuse color. The teal color is kind of the average since that they've been averaging since 1942. And then that dark blue is the drought, you know, most recent drought from 2008 to 2015. So you can see in October, we're showing at about 9% contributing into the Highland Lakes compared to the average since 1942. Almost all, and we can see in the previous graph, almost all the summers, or the summer months here have been lower than average, which is why we're seeing that decrease. And this graph is the daily water use for Leander. It shows in the dark blue is October, and then the gray is September, and then this is last year's October in red. So we had a peak day right at the beginning of October of 13.13 million gallons. And this was about 3.4 million gallons more than we consumed last year in this month. And then we're down about a million from last month. This is the water connections for Octo, or through the end of October. We had 19,642 water connections. This is up about 1,800 from October of 2018, and up about 132 from September. Our, our commercial accounts stayed about the same, but in a year's time, they went up about 47 new commercial accounts. And the final graph I have is the water production from the two plants Sandy Creek and BCRUA. The dash, well, Sandy Creek is in the dark blue, and BCRUA is shown in the light blue. The dash lines are the monthly, so that you'll see the seasonal variations. And so you can see we're coming down off that summer peak. And then the solid lines are the rolling average. So in October of 2019, we produced three, about 301 million gallons of water, and compared to last October, where we had 176 million. If there are any questions?
Question. On a commercial development, like, let's talk about North Line because it's about to break ground. Is that considered one?
One connection or multiple?
One connection or multiple for each business that's in there?
I would think it would be multiple connections because I think it's water customers.
Okay. So same for like a strip center. It may be owned by an entity, but if there's six within there.
As long as, I guess, as long as they do their bill. I don't know how they, you know, how they would distribute. Right. And then charge the customers.
Really be one customer.
Okay.
But most of them try to get their, tend to be their own.
Do we know, like, for instance, what Gateway does, where Lowe's is at, and all the individuals? All of them are individual? Okay.
I had a question. On the connections. So for commercial, I'm just trying to understand that, of course, I can't read it, but I think it's 661.
661.
Is that total in our city, or is that how many have been added this calendar year?
That's total in the city.
Okay.
Yeah. So this is a cumulative. So October of 2018, there were 614. And then October of this year, 661. So it's, it's kind of a continuous accumulation.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right. Next is council reports. We do have Quarterly Attendance Report that I'm going to put up.
I have a question. Why is it that it shows the briefing sessions, which are optional, but it doesn't show our attendance in BCRUA, Campo, CapCog, whatever boards we serve on?
Well, isn't that because the briefings are not optional? They are, that's a public meeting that's been posted? Is that correct?
When it passed, you said it was optional.
I did not say it is optional. What I told you was that if you didn't want to come, you didn't have to come. That's exactly what I said. But that, that's like saying, okay, you don't have to come. I mean, it's still an absence, but you don't have to come. So, I mean, it's a public meeting. Our constituents voted us in so that we would come to meetings.
Okay. So when we're in our capacity on other boards and commissions, it's still a public meeting. I'm wondering why it's not up there?
Which, you know, we don't, we don't keep an attendance chart on the boards and things that you have that we post. But part of the charter says how many meetings you can miss, and that's why we have done this.
So if we're not going to briefing sessions, and we're talking to staff in advance, which we were told we could do, we could, we're violating the charter now?
I don't know what you were told, but that is a regular meeting. I mean, it's a call meeting. So briefing session is a posted agenda. It's just like, the regular meeting is just shorter. Same day. But yeah.
Thank you.
All right. This time, we're going to move to our consent agenda. Item 14 has been tabled until December 5th. So this would be on 11 through 16, but not on 14.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right. We have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor? This is unanimously. All right. This time, we're going to move to our public hearing, item 17. We're going to conduct a public hearing regarding zoning case 19-Z-020 to amend the current zoning of interim SFS 2B, single-family suburban to LC 2A, local commercial, as stated on the posted agenda. Ms. Griffith.
This is a public hearing for the property located at 602 Riva Ridge. The property is currently zoned single-family suburban, and the applicant's proposing to change the zoning district to the LC 2A local commercial district. Currently, this property is in a mixed-use corridor, and mixed-use corridors do support local commercial at intersections of roads. Staff did recommend approval of the request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval at their meeting last week. I'll be available for questions after the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to approve.
One second.
All right. We have a motion to approve with a second. Is there any more comments, questions? All right. All in favor? All opposed? All right. This time, we're going to move to item 18. We're going to conduct a public hearing regarding zoning case 18-Z-029, amend the current zoning of GC 3C, general commercial, to P the planned unit development. With the base zoning district of GC 5A, general commercial, as stated on the posted agenda.
This is a public hearing for the Leander Towing Planned Unit Development. They're proposing the base zoning district of GC 5A, general commercial, with the condition that a record yard is permitted. During the initial request, they had proposed a masonry screening fence along this side of the property. As part of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, they agreed to amend their request so that the masonry wall would be provided on the western boundary. That way, it's screening the record yard from Baghdad, because there's a cemetery next door to it. They also agreed to, they're continuing the R panel wall here, but they're going to put the landscaping between the fencing and the cemetery. So when that area is used in the future, it'll still look nice for the people who go to visit the cemetery. The, they're also proposing to increase the landscaping requirement to help with screening. At Planning and Zoning Commission, the commission did recommend approval with the changes that I listed, and I'll be available for questions after the public hearing.
All right. I do have some people signed up to speak. First, we have Pete Temes.
You state your address to work.
Good evening. My name is Pete Temes. I live at 11327 Hero Way West, about 2,000 feet from the current proposed location. I'm going to start off with being, saying I am not for the zoning change, primarily because of the impacts on environmental conditions and effects of the type of business that's being proposed. We all hear about contaminants. We all know that pollution isn't the best thing for us. And when I speak environmental, I don't speak earth, water, dirt, stuff like that. I'm talking about the community environment, the environment up and down the road. What's that landscape going to change like if the zoning is approved and the business is allowed to proceed? So the business is based off of bringing in wreck, broken-down vehicles to that location or to a couple of others, body shop, mechanic, impound lot, or the par owner, hence being a repo. This is the base of that business. So all these vehicles are not new. They're not off the lot. They have a tendency of leaking, obviously. And whether they're new or not, and they're on the road and they leak, this is concentrating that spillage in one location. And such fluids contain toxic and carcinogenic chemicals. We're talking about gas, antifreeze. We're talking about brake fluid or any possible gear oil on this site. And these fluids drip out usually very slowly onto the surface below them. But again, when you concentrate that, it ends up being a bigger situation than just a couple of drops. And so these situations are particularly dangerous when they're close to water sources. Brushy Creek Headwaters are about 600 feet from the back of the property location. Between the proposed location and the creek is single-family urban. So we got drainage running across people's urban plots. It's not developed at this point. But then we get to, you know, what happens if it is, and the effects of that pollution, you know? Just to put it straight out there, you know, like I emailed it, water pollution kills people. It's not the best thing for our environment. It's not the best thing for us. And we just need to learn, as a human society, to do this. There was a study done in 2015 that stated 1.8 million deaths occur to water pollution. That's 2015 study. And it also came to find out that every year, unsafe water sickens about 1 billion, 1 billion people in our country, whether it's minor eye infection to skin irritations.
Thank you, sir.
Javier, you're in?
Javier Urea, resident of Leander, live at 1720 Mary Vista. I'm a degree in accountant. I do consulting work for several small businesses in Leander, Cedar Park, Houston even. And so Leander Toman is a client of mine. I've known him from when they had just one truck. Now they have three trucks, several employees. They just told me just now they hired another employee. So they're a benefit to the city. I don't understand what the problem is with environmental impact. It's only a parking lot waiting. These vehicles that are there are waiting for the final disposition from the insurance company on where to take that vehicle, either to a body shop, or does it get sent to a salvage yard? So there's no mechanic work done there. It's quiet. Cars are just parked there waiting for the owners to come pick them up, or for the insurance agent to determine the final disposition of it. I've known Justin and Nicole for several years now, and very nice people. My wife loves them. They're great people. And the reason I'm here is I heard there was a petition roaming around the city trying to stop this. And I thought you need to just come speak on their behalf and let you know that these are good people, and they're a benefit to the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. So at this time, we're going to close the public hearing, or we're going to move to the action on zoning case 18-Z-029, stated on the posted agenda. I have a question of Robin, if it's okay. Is, what, is there screening on the east side? I know you talked about cemetery.
This side right here?
Is that the?
Yeah, that's the east side. So there's a daycare right here. And there's another building further north. But they're required to have screening in all setback areas. So they will have landscaping. You can see in the image around the pond. We just were focused on the other two sides in the discussions because they're the most visible.
Okay. But no walls, just landscape? Is that right?
They're, I think they have walls on all four sides. I think that's a requirement.
Eight foot?
Right. Yeah. So they have an eight-foot wall. They were proposing R panel, and then it'll be masonry on that western side.
Okay.
And the drainage, I mean, clearly, it's been engineered. But just to be clear, it's draining to the east, the lot itself.
So they're showing their detention pond on the east. When they submit site plans, they have to provide engineered drawings that show how that works.
Okay. So they'll make it drain.
Correct.
That direction instead of towards.
Or if it doesn't work that direction, they'll make it drain the way it's supposed to drain.
Good. So it's not going to go into the cemetery?
Correct. Correct.
That's what I thought.
What about signage?
So that'll be interesting. When you look at their site, they only have one street frontage, I guess, so it would be difficult to have a sign. They might work with the people in the front to do a monument sign because they have that shared entrance.
Yeah, it'd probably be good to ask them.
Counsel? Justin Townsley, live on seven oh eight Morgan Drive. As far as the signage goes, I don't really need one, honestly. If it's acquired, we can definitely make it work, whatever, however way we need to.
Okay. Thank you.
That was part of the problem with this particular lot, was there's no visibility, no frontage, no one was going to develop it and give us some property tax on it, so.
So my question is, would it not make more sense to put that wall on the south side and do nice landscaping on the cemetery side?
The south side is the cemetery.
For that future land use to the south?
That is cemetery.
Yeah, the cemetery, they own this whole property. It's just not, correct, it's all owned by the cemetery, just not developed yet.
So where is the single family?
It's zoned, single family, but owned by the cemetery. So this, this piece right here, that's zoned, single family, but owned by the cemetery.
So they're going to keep expanding cemetery out there?
That's my understanding. They haven't said otherwise, and it would be an awkward, single-family subdivision. I'm not sure how they would have the access.
They'd have to drink through the cemetery.
Right, and it'd have a very limited number of lots because it looks like there's only one way in and out.
That's why that piece has gone undeveloped for so long. It's kind of a hard, hard piece of land.
And they've, they've tried to develop this before?
From what I understand, it's been for sale for a while.
We've had quite a few development meetings where we talk about different projects.
Without any visibility, most commercial businesses won't go there. No signage, no visibility.
No, I know, that's why I'm.
Can I ask you, on the, to the east of the daycare, I know that there was an applicant recently that wanted to put a, or wants to put a retail center there? Is that correct? Is that the one right next to the daycare or is that further east?
I believe it's this heavy commercial piece, right.
Okay.
Right, and we've had a meeting about that one.
Okay.
I can't recall this piece being a discussion, but it's something that's possible. If you look at the future land use map, that whole area right here, this is commercial corridor, so the comprehensive plan supports the GC land use category, so it's something that's feasible.
Okay. I was just curious how close it was because that's why I was asking about the screening on the east side, you know?
Yeah, so if you look on the, the east side, there's an existing building.
Yeah, right.
So, oh, go ahead, no, go ahead.
Can you pull up the, where you showed where the detention pond is? I want to make sure that we are covering those concerns about any drainage. Where is that going to go?
So this is the proposed location of the detention pond.
Okay.
And this isn't the formal site plan from the engineer. I'm assuming they've looked at that when they prepared this exhibit, but when they submit site development plans, that's when we get the engineered drawings.
Okay, so on the other side of that is that retail, I can't remember what's over there?
So this is where the, there's a daycare, and then there's the barber shop and the pest control. There's a whole bunch of different development in there.
All right, Jason, do I have a question?
No.
I have some questions for the applicant. Hi. How many tow trucks are y'all going to have in there?
Currently, we have three, only.
Okay. And vehicles that have been towed there, you said short-term, right?
Yes.
What, what usually do you see? A few days, a few weeks?
No, typically, they only stay there for about a week.
A week, okay. And about how many can you have at one time or typically see at one time?
I mean, it depends on the climate. I mean, we could see two or three a day.
Okay, so we're not talking dozens?
No.
Okay. And then what are, I saw when you were here previously, and there was a brief mention of TCEQ, the water quality. What does that look like for y'all? I assume there's requirements and reports and check-ins, maybe?
Absolutely, that's, that's something that's governed by the state, and they, they'll actually come out and inspect it to make sure it's adequate before they pass it.
When you pick up something that is leaking fluids, what's your protocol for that?
Protocol, we'll put absorb it down. Most of the time, if they're leaking, it's at the scene of the accident.
Okay, and then they run out of fluids, I suppose, or?
Absolutely, if they're at that point.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
All right, this is an action item. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor? All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, good luck. All right, at this time, we're going to close, well, I'm sorry, we already closed the public hearing, so we're going to move to our regular agenda. Item twenty. I thought I did, spaced it off. All right, nineteen, we're going to conduct a public hearing regarding zoning case nineteen dash zero dash zero one nine to amend the current zoning of LC one, local commercial to LC two B, local commercial, as stated on the posted agenda.
This is a public hearing for a zoning request, and the, the only thing they're requesting is to change the site component. Currently, it's zoned with a type one site component, and they're proposing a type two. They currently have site development plans under review for a daycare, and with the type one site component, it's very restrictive about the, the building footprint, and they're asking for a larger building. This request does comply with the comprehensive plan, and the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of it at the meeting last week. I'll be available for questions after the public hearing.
All right, at this time, we're going to move to the action on zoning case nineteen dash Z dash zero one nine, as stated on the posted agenda. I should go make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve with a second. Any other questions? All in favor? All right, passes unanimously. Now, we're going to move to our regular agenda. Item twenty, discuss and consider action on the approval of the makeup of the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee.
So as you guys know, we've entered into a contract with HAF, and we're starting the process to update the comprehensive plan. One of our first steps is for the council to agree on the makeup of the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee. Up on the screen, you can see fifteen representatives that we've worked with HAF to come up with. This group will be meeting with HAF as well as city staff throughout the process of the comprehensive plan. This, this time, it'll be a little different than the previous comprehensive plan. The city council and the committee are both going to review the drafts and have input throughout the process, and we need to create this makeup at this meeting so that we can adopt it at the next meeting, so you can actually appoint people to be on it so we can stay on track with our timeframe. The kickoff meeting date will be January sixteenth, and I'm available for any questions.
I have a question. So the Economic Development Committee resides in the chamber, but the chamber already gets one vote, so.
We see them as different entities, and you, you can change this. This is just a suggestion. We did not want to go over fifteen. We thought that was probably the maximum number of people you want.
Okay.
Let's have a question. Robin, based on if, if we approve this and we've got the appointments for all of us, how do we go about getting interest from, from our citizens? Or do we just come up with someone ourselves? We may not know that person that could be really interested. How do we get that message?
So we have, we have two options. Either the, the council can select from the existing groups, and then you each have your own appointment, and we do that at the next meeting, or we have the ability to request applications and have people submit to be on the committee, but we probably should delay at another meeting to make the decision so you have more time to receive applicants and review them. Either way, it will still work with our schedule.
Okay, so we do have a, a way to get the information out quickly to ask for people that, that may be interested in serving.
I feel like we do, yeah.
And so for a while, we've had applications online for a comprehensive plan committee, so can, can all of us get a copy of everyone who's already submitted applications?
Yes.
Okay, that'd be great. And then for one through eight, are we, someone's going to nominate just one person, and then we'll vote on it? Is that the process?
I think that, that works.
Is that the way it works, or do they vote on who their member?
You guys appoint the person from those different groups.
I didn't know if they were going to nominate somebody.
I mean, if you wanted to do it that way, we could try.
I'm just asking.
Right.
Excuse me. It stays with the council. You pick the P and Z person, the park board person, people that you know already. If you wanted to solicit, you can, we just got to kick it back, maybe a meeting or so. But y'all have made most of these appointments anyway, so they're people that you're familiar with, I would think, on those boards.
And then in addition to this list, there will be stakeholder meetings.
Absolutely, yes.
And those are.
Like HOAs, churches, school, all of those, right, we have a big list.
And then open to every citizen, so that's a whole process.
We're going to have town hall meetings, right.
Perfect, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. We have the Economic Development Committee member and a Chamber of Commerce rep, but we don't have large employers other than LISD, which I think has a different outlook probably than, than employment. Last time, we had ACC rep. I would imagine St. David's would probably be a good rep to have.
So we were going to work with them as part of the stakeholder groups?
Okay.
But, I mean, you do have appointments, so if a place felt like that was important, they could pick that as their appointment?
That was going to be my next question, is, is there any restriction on us for appointments? Like if we picked a member of the business community who doesn't necessarily live in Leander, are we able to appoint them? Because it doesn't say.
I think that's, that's challenging. I don't think there are strict rules about who you could select. I think it would make more sense to make sure they're in the community as a resident, or I guess if it's like an existing business that's here.
It's already, excuse me, in years past, you had to be a member of the city, and we were allowed only one representative of someone in the ETJ on this core committee. But the stakeholders, there's five or six different categories of stakeholders. One is education, one is business, there's several different categories.
Right, well, my argument to that would be that since there aren't so many in the core category this year, could we appoint somebody that would have qualified before?
I'm not sure that we're limited. I guess we could check and make sure there's not a limit in the charter or something that says we can't do it, but we could find out.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to.
I would definitely want them to be, live in the city.
I do too. I think that's in the charter, but I'm not.
Okay.
That's what I was told, when I lived in the ETJ.
Okay, and I mean, y'all are making up the makeup, so you can vote to do that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a.
Would like to make a friendly amendment that we change the Economic Development Committee member to an economic development professional.
But isn't that already going to be covered with a stakeholder from distance?
It will, it will be, and on our EDC, aren't most of them residents? The one, the EDC in the chamber?
I just mean, as you pointed out, it's almost the same.
I think they all are residents, if I'm not mistaken.
But then you're giving the chamber two slots.
But they're two different committees, aren't they?
Well, one is just a chamber member, but you have to be a member of the chamber to be on one of their committees anyway, so technically they're. Hi.
Hi, you're right. So that they are, they are separate, so they, it's a group of, of citizens, so it's not necessarily, like, it's not Bridget. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I don't know that we required the EDC to become members of the chamber when we moved it over to the chamber.
I don't think they're required to be members. I think they live in the community, though.
For the old town.
Oh, they are required to be a chamber member?
Absolutely. Yep.
If you wanted to do something different, maybe consider removing economic development and do Old Town, like someone that owns property in Old Town, might be an option.
But they don't all live here.
They own property here?
They own property here. Some live here, I guess.
If you're invested, you have property here.
Right.
So it's in your court?
I thought you made the motion.
It goes backwards.
Oh, okay. I don't see any reason to change it.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
So with your, your motion selecting this makeup, are you wanting us to, to publish this and solicit applicants? Or do you want to appoint people? I mean, you'll appoint them either way, but.
Marcy brought up a good point, that we already have people that have checked off that they're, they're interested. We could, we could pull from that. I'm not opposed to, and I, I would actually, I think it would be beneficial if we do open that up because somebody might be interested.
So that means we would.
I would not want to inhibit anyone or prohibit somebody from, from serving that really wants to serve, so I.
So we would not put it on for December fifth? It would be on the second meeting in December so we could get more applicants? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I have one more question. Our appointments into places, are those subject to council approval, or is it just? Sorry.
It's okay, so you guys are.
Do I need to back up applicants if mine gets rejected? That's what I'm asking.
Right, so the, the way we're making up this board, you guys are making these decisions, so you're setting up a framework for how you want to handle it. So if you want to make the rule, they all have to be residents, you can make that rule. If you want to make the rule, everybody has to vote on the appointments, you can do that. So y'all are setting up the framework.
So when, I'm sorry, when, when would we do that?
So we could do it now? You could decide how you want to appoint people?
Well, and, and how to vote on it, because like, yes, if I.
Okay, I'd like to withdraw my, my motion. Now we're clean.
Okay.
Ms. Battalion Parker, you will need to withdraw.
I will withdraw my second.
I understand what you're saying. I, I kind of see the thing about the chamber having two. But I think we still have oversight who that's going to be, so, you know, if it's somebody that we weren't comfortable with, then we'll have to put them on there.
With Christine, with Councilmember Cindy Chris's question, so when we have our own placements, is that something that we're agreeing that, that that person is on there? Or is that something that we're all going to vote on?
And it's going to be voted on.
We need to, we need to solidify that down so we know.
Well, and you're saying the, the appointment, let's say for place one, two, three, that you voted, it's be your appointment.
Right, and we would have to communicate as to who we're talking to, so we're not all talking to one person.
Well, that person would probably tell you that.
Maybe, you would hope so, but. Just need, the process just should be clear so we know what we're doing and how we're doing it, so it's just done.
Having served on this committee, and it took us two years, I think it's very important that council is in agreement with each nomination, whether it's the one through eight or our individual appointments. It's a group that needs to be able to gel. I, I think the citizen, I, I wrote down citizen at large, but really, that's our own place. I, I think the citizen, I, I wrote down citizen at large, but really, that's our own place appointments. So there's seven, um, citizens at large for us to go through all the applications that have come in. I do like the idea, and I had made a note, um, of adding an Old Town, um, landowner. And I, I think it's imperative that they're all residents. We, that's why we specifically have only one resident in the ETJ. We, this is, this is for people who live here, and it's made up by the citizens, so I think that's very important.
Well, my concern on, on that specifically, why I brought up the question, is that, um, we limit ourselves when it's residents. I understand the, you know, having a stake in it, but also, how many of our residents have done this before? And the last one that we had is a reason why a lot of us are up here, because we've complained about it. And, um, I think if we broaden that, we can find people who have a unique experience that are able to speak to this, that have even, I know people who have done this before, um, that know what works and what doesn't, um, and that could be great. As for our own appointments as residents, which is fine, um, after how hectic and crazy the appointments went last month for boards and commissions, I think that whoever we pick should just be whoever we pick. I don't think council should get to the vote on that. Because if, if one of us picks somebody and it doesn't get through, then what, we have to have three in line waiting afterwards? Like, that's a lot of applicants.
Well, uh, just to comment, I, I think you're selling our citizens short, because I know that there are highly qualified people that have expressed interest to serve on the comp plan under, uh, a lot of them serve on these boards. And those that don't, their applications have been submitted, and they are qualified people. The half and associates will bring in, when they do their stakeholder meetings, that's our key specialists. When it comes to education, transportation, they'll bring in the regional transportation partners. Now, it doesn't get any more specialized than that, so.
I feel like it also makes us choose a person that we think would have broader support, you know? That hopefully it would be unanimous. I mean, I think everybody's doing it for the right reason. So I think it would be incumbent upon us to maybe make sure we're picking the right person, so that they would have unanimous or near unanimous approval.
So I think that we all would do that, and I think that, I think we need to make this as clear as possible. So I think having the fifteen people are great, um, even if it is like this. Um, I think that somebody should have to, if there is a separate state, this is my first time going through this, but I understand the development world. If we had somebody that was a resident that was, that even worked in the development world, this would be great to have somebody like that here. So be, having somebody that is a resident, I think would be important. So, um, I know, Jason, I'm not gonna make a motion, I want you to talk first, but I think it's important that somebody's, that, that somebody that lives here and has interest in the city. Um, I think it is, I actually, um, I, I think it is important that if we're gonna make appointments, that there are appointments. I personally think, I'm not gonna talk about how our last, the, I, I really didn't appreciate the way that the boards and commissions and stuff, and the way that we, that we do that. So this would be, um, I believe that, that if we're gonna make an appointment, then we make an appointment, just the way it reads right here, too. Um, so I think that they should have to be here, somebody should have to be here, and then also, I think that we should be able to make our own appointment. And we can also talk to several people. I have a list of, I didn't know what today was, so I made a list of ten people. And I'll go talk to all of them and see who's interested in doing that, and I think that we're all capable of doing those things, too, if that makes sense. So, Jason, I'm gonna go ahead.
So I've been over punching this button back and forth. I agree, and I don't like to agree, because I realize that I may not like one of the other council members' appointments. But I think we should, I think the best thing is we bring our own appointment. And I hate saying that, because this is important. I mean, this is really, really important, and we need to have people on this board that are competent. And so, but having said that, I do believe we should bring our own appointments. I believe we should vote on the rest of them, but ours we bring, because we have oversight to this entire process. It's not like the people on this board are gonna vote on this comprehensive plan. They're going to advise. And for, as a council, we're still gonna vote on it. So that's, that's another reason why I feel like that we can bring our own appointments.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to, um, to approve our structure here, um, and to ensure that, um, anybody that is being nominated is a, is a resident in the city of Leander, and that also that we would be able to make, um, our individual, um, place appointments.
A second.
Not subject to a full council vote.
A second.
If that makes sense.
And have on here to solicit, y'all all wish to solicit.
I have one, um. The, it's possible the TERS board member may not be a resident, as well as LISD representative. And then, um, Chamber of Commerce, I don't know if they're all residents, so that might limit who you could select if they have to live here.
Does anybody have any issues with us making sure that our own appointments are residents?
I think it's required, that they all, that's the whole point of this comprehensive plan. Aside from the TERS board or the LISD representative.
And the chamber, or they have to be a resident?
They have to be a resident. This.
I think, um, historically, we've used the president of the chamber, and she's not a resident.
Well, she shouldn't have been.
Okay.
No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding, Bridget. I think, I, I just think that's very important. I would like to make a friendly amendment to add one additional person, and that's our Old Town representative.
Okay, but they, but they have to live here, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, okay, let's be clear. Are we talking about a property owner?
Wait a minute. I think they have to be a resident.
That's a stakeholder.
Because if we're gonna open it up to a property holder there.
You're right. Gotta be a resident. No, my friendly amendment is to add one additional, um, place, and, so number sixteen is an Old Town resident. Does that make sense?
Second.
You have to agree to it. Yeah, and I'll also, I'll also agree, yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion with a second, with a friendly amendment. Does everybody understand what we're voting on?
Can I ask one question? We are still getting the list from you, though, correct? That have, okay, perfect, yes.
You clarified that, yeah.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, for our submissions, for voting, they have to fill out an application, correct? So if you're, uh, this is just a side note, but if you're soliciting someone to apply, if they haven't already filled out an application, please request that they do so.
So I have one more question, as we go out to solicit people. Um, do we have any sort of idea of what we can tell them they're getting into?
I'll put together a summary.
That'd be great, thank you.
Yeah, and like, expectations of number of meetings, that kind of thing?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, also, day meetings, night meetings, that kind of thing. Thanks.
All right, uh, all in favor? All opposed? He's back. Okay, so, I think we're good to go. All right, item twenty-one, discuss and consider action on subdivision case nineteen dash PP zero one two, to approve the Hero Way Business Center preliminary plat as stated on the posted agenda.
So this, um, is action on a preliminary plat. The council does not typically get to review this type of application. Um, typically, it is approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. In this situation, they are proposing to remove one heritage tree. And per our ordinance, that triggers a requirement for you guys to also agree to the removal. Um, the Planning and Zoning Commission did review the request, and they did motion to approve it. And they recommended that the council review the, the street location. At the meeting, we did have the adjacent property owners show up with some concerns. The, the issue that we run into is it does comply with the subdivision ordinance, so it's challenging for us to have them make changes to the street alignment. The two owners have spoken, and it sounds like they're on a, a good track to get everything done. I'm available for any questions.
And so they would have to do the tree mitigation and?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Is the city requesting that the road lines up with the road across the street? That's my only concern.
This road, River, Riverway Lane?
Yes.
Yes, they will line up, and it's gonna have the same name. It's a continuation of that street.
Okay. Is, is there gonna be a light there? Is there any concern about crossing over Hero Way?
I don't think there's a concern today, um, and I think a traffic study would be required to warrant a light.
Okay, thank you.
And the one, the one heritage tree, is it, that's on the actual, the proposed road, is that right?
Right here.
Yep, got it.
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
I'd just like to make a, make a comment that I am really impressed with how few trees they removed, cause that property is so full of them, and I think they did a good job. I wanna commend them.
I agree.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor? All right, passes unanimously. All right, we're gonna move to item twenty-two, discuss and consider directing staff on off-street parking requirements for multifamily units. I am tabling or postponing this, uh, on the advice of council on certain language, so, um. Do I need a date?
May, it, it need to be date certain if you're tabling. If you wish to just withdraw.
Yeah, I'll just withdraw.
Then it doesn't have to have a date.
Okay. All right, so item twenty-three, discuss and consider direct, uh, consider directing staff on street tree requirements in the right-of-way. Uh, I don't know who's giving the one on this one. Oh, this is, uh, this one you and I talked about, yeah.
Comments from council about needing to amend the street tree ordinance. And what we need from you is to direct staff, how you want that to be done, so we can come back with a document that you can approve. Not that you have to approve, but you can approve.
I think the, the thing that we keep hearing from, uh, people is the cost of, you know, the, the root barriers, it adds a lot of cost to the price of the house. And I mean, you know, we're talking so many times about affordable housing, and how do we get affordable housing? And, you know, it seems to be a, um, maybe an unnecessary, um, you know, ordinance as far as trying to get a canopy, for instance. You know, I was never comfortable with it when we did it, and that was because, you know, I had a yard full of oak trees, and every day I'd go pick a huge branch out of the yard that fell down. So I'm thinking, well, my gosh, if the can, if the street is right next, you know, if the tree's in the right-of-way there, it's gonna be falling right on a car, you know? So for me, this is, you know, undoing something that should have been done. So I guess what we're doing is just giving you direction at this time to revise the ordinance and change it back to what it was, if council.
So you're asking to remove the street tree requirement?
In the right-of-way, in the right-of-way. And so it would be, they would still have the same requirements in the yard. It would just be on their property.
And this is all properties, commercial, residential, multifamily?
Okay. So I have a question. The ordinance wasn't included in our packet. What is the ordinance exactly?
So the, the way the ordinance is structured, you're required to have a tree placed between the, the roadway and the sidewalk, and it's spaced every thirty feet.
On every house?
All streets.
All, all streets, okay.
And can I just?
Sure.
Okay. I fought adamantly against this when it was, um, adopted as an ordinance. And stop and correct me if, if, if I'm wrong, but just so everyone here and our citizens understand, the comprehensive plan casts a vision, and there were beautiful pictures of where we all wanna live, Mayberry, with the huge oaks, you know, climb, climbing, entangled over every street. And so that then created the street tree ordinance. Let's do this. Everyone, great, we all want this. The problem is, in my opinion, there wasn't, um, a lot of background from Arborist, because I've personally heard from Arborist who have said, if you plant a tree every thirty feet and require a five, six hundred dollar root barrier, so it doesn't eventually break the sidewalk, you're never gonna get the canopy trees. So what was sold to council as a great idea, um, by way of the ordinance, made it impossible to ever happen, number one. Number two, what this also did was require that the tree be placed in the city right-of-way. So now, it is the city's responsibility to maintain liability, should a branch hit a kid, or me, as I always am hitting my head on something, or, and, uh, keep it irrigated. And so some of the negotiations then occurred with developers where we say, okay, well, we'll have the developer and the development agreement take responsibility for trees that are in the city right-of-way. So there's been a, a lot of issues on this, many-fold. So it is my, it is my desire to get rid of it.
Is that a motion?
I would like to make a motion to direct city staff to remove the street tree requirements from our current ordinance.
A second.
The right-of-way planting of trees.
That's what a street tree is, yes, by definition, correct?
Okay, correct.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other comments?
And this is separate, this is just a street tree thing. This isn't just, this is part of the tree ordinance, correct?
So it's in the, the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
And, um.
Given the process, though, it's not like overnight that you can do this.
Absolutely. So this is in a couple of ordinances, and it's in a couple of details that we've created. So we're gonna have to evaluate where it's placed, and then we'll present you with a, a comprehensive amendment that would be subdivision ordinance as well as the, the zoning ordinance.
Uh, is part of, if you're going through the tree ordinances, uh, would it make sense also? I know one thing that we do, that I don't believe other cities do, is where we measure, like, for, for the, um, trees in the front yard.
So in the, in the beginning, in the beginning of, of January, we're gonna start the process to evaluate ordinances, and I think that's something we could put on the list. Do, are y'all wanting this to go quicker, or could it be in that same group?
I think we want this one to go quicker.
My motion is to make it happen yesterday, so, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, can I ask you a question and make it clear that the developer still has the ability to put it there if they choose to?
Absolutely.
Okay, which is how it should have been.
Right.
In the right-of-way?
If they choose to.
If the developer chooses to put a tree between the sidewalk?
Then they have to assume responsibility for it.
So we have instances of that in Bryson, where they wanna have the street trees, it's actually part of their PUD, and, um, the HOA is responsible for the irrigation, so it's, right.
There you go.
So I, I have one other question regarding, just for clarification, uh, on maybe projects that have already been approved that required the street trees that have not started building yet.
Right.
I would like to know, if I were that, that builder, I would wanna know, do I still have to do it, or can we take it away? Does it have to be brought back before council to remove it, because it was part of their original plan?
It depends on, um, how it was implemented. So if there's own single-family urban, and they're doing street trees because the ordinance says so, and you change the ordinance, then they don't have to do it anymore. But like in Bryson, that's one of the requirements of the planned unit development. So if they wanna stop doing it, they have to do a PUD amendment to remove that requirement.
Okay, so any approved PUDs would just stay as they are?
Some of them, like it.
Brought before?
Correct. And I think there's only like two or three that have that requirement in it.
I just wouldn't want y'all to get, you know, five hundred phone calls on Mondays, hey, take that away.
They will, bringing them chocolates and flowers.
Now, there wa, there's one development on Journey Parkway, I believe it was sixty-nine acres, and I can't remember the home.
Simpson Tract, it's now lost wood preserve.
Yes.
Yes.
They have two hundred and forty homes planned on sixty-nine acres.
I'm not positive on the number.
I knew, I knew it was sixty-nine acres, and it's two hundred and, maybe it's two twenty, but let's say two hundred and forty, doesn't matter. They have to, because of their street configuration, put in over six hundred trees at an estimated cost of a thousand dollars a tree. Now, this isn't your front yard tree that's required, this is separate street trees.
Now, the street trees do count towards the front yard tree requirement.
Okay. Well, that's good to know.
But that's a lot of money.
I have a quick question, um, just to be sure, I know y'all are busy with Northline and, and timing and all that, is it okay that we throw this at you right now?
Do I get a choice? Because it, it will be okay. Yeah. It, it's not something you'll see at the next meeting, we have to go through the public hearing process, so we'll have to prepare the revisions, and then we post the notice, so it probably won't be until January, when it comes before you.
Okay, thank you.
Pardon?
So there's no crying or anything?
I won't cry.
Okay, good.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? All right, passes unanimously. All right, at this time, we're gonna move to twenty-four, we're gonna convene into executive session pursuant to section five-five-one-oh-seven-two Texas Government Code to deliberate the acquisition of right-of-way and temporary construction easements from Scott and Angela Muller, Larry and Becky Hill, no relation, and Charles and Sandra Rouse for the right-of-way East Wood, Woodview roadway project. The time is eight-thirty-three. All right, the time is eight-forty-seven, and now we're gonna reconvene into open session to take any action as deemed appropriate in the city council's discretion. Pro-Town, do you have a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase contract for the fee simple right-of-way tracks of zero point one-six-eight acres and zero point one-six-seven acres, and temporary easement rights of zero point zero-five-eight acres and zero point zero-four-nine acres, more or less, for right-of-way dedication and acquisition of lots six and six TCE, and lots seven and seven TCE, from Scott and Angela Miller, Larry and Becky Hill, and Charles and Sandra Rouse, in the amount of five thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars even, and ten thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars even consecutively.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Passes unanimously, thank you very much. All right, we're gonna move to twenty-five, closing statements.
I just wanted to let everyone know that have a, our, wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, that's all I have for you.
Yes, I'd like to thank, uh, Dara and, and staff for giving us a good meal tonight, um, before the council meeting. And, um, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, please go home and, and look at the, the great blessings in your life and give thanks for those things.
Well, I wanna thank Gordon, um, it's, uh, it's been a pleasure having you up here. Your composure, your professionalism has been inspiring, especially since, uh, the seas have been kinda rough over the last, uh, several months, and I just appreciate you, uh, keeping the ship upright and everything you've done for the city, and just thank you from the bottom of my heart.
I also wanted to thank Mr. Pierce for his service, and I hope you have some restful time before your next job, your next mission.
I hope this is my last.
Okay, well, then I hope you just get to relax. And then, happy Thanksgiving to everybody, and I hope that everyone finds something to be really thankful for.
Yeah, thank you, Gordon, um, this is not my normal attire, but Gordon loves plaid, is what we heard, and had a great, uh, staff celebration yesterday, so of course I would come do this for you.
We appreciate it.
Uh, we just, uh, we really appreciate you, Gordon, so thank you so much, and, um, best to you and the family as you're moving forward. Um, I'm also really thankful, I think that a lot of times we, um, it's easy to, to, uh, to pass over Thanksgiving and just go straight to like the colors of this, I have one plaid shirt, and it just happens to be this, so everybody automatically thinks I'm here for Christmas, and that's not true, and I have a lot to be thankful for. So, uh, I have a beautiful and amazing family that is extremely supportive, that is at home, and I might actually get to see them tonight, which is great, and, uh, so I'm very, uh, I'm very thankful for them. I'm thankful for our city, and I'm thankful that, uh, that, that the city trusts us to, to, uh, to lead you and to, and to just serve you, and I'm just, I'm really, uh, I'm, I'm humbled by the, by the opportunity to be able to do that, too. And I'm also just thankful that we have, uh, that we have a, a God in heaven that we get the, that we get the, that calls us sons and daughters, and I just, I'm extremely thankful for that, too, so I just wanted to share that with y'all, and thanks for everybody for hanging in with us.
I can't do any better than that. Am I even on? Okay. Mr. Pierce, I just wanna tell you personally, thank you. I really enjoyed, um, gleaning wisdom and your discernment, it's been great. And I wanna thank staff, even though most of them are gone, uh, for all their hard work all year. This is, this has, uh, been fun, right? And I just hope and pray that everyone is safe and enjoys their family, and, uh, has a great Thanksgiving, so thank y'all.
Well, that was really cool, because the sound that I heard wasn't matching how your lips were moving, so I gotta watch that more often. I don't even know where the camera is, by the way, but, um, thank God. I just wanted to say thank you also, Gordon, and, uh, again, you know, um, it's, it's been kind of a crazy ride, you know? That's the way it goes, though, sometimes, right? That's what makes it, makes it interesting, you know? And, uh, but you came along, you were the right guy at the right time, and, you know, I'm looking forward to Rick coming with a sense of, you know, sadness that you're not gonna be here, but, you know? We do have a comprehensive plan, so if, rather than doing dishes, I mean, I'm not saying you could, no, I'm just, I, uh, I, I really appreciate everything, and, uh, it's meant a lot to all of us, so, again, have a happy Thanksgiving, everyone, and I appreciate our staff for all their hard work, thank you very much. Uh, with that, we'll adjourn, the time is eight-fifty-seven.